I'll call a meeting to order, would please. Professor Wells, would you lead us in a mokation, please, sir?
I will. Let's all bear our heads, please. Dear Lord, thank you for this evening and this gathering of our citizens and our board and opportunities to work together. Thank you for all those police officers, firemen, our veterans that are here tonight. I saw several fellows that I know. And for those who are in our services now protecting us from harm's way. We ask you blessings on Frederick County. You've taken care of us very, very well. And we ask for you to guide and direct us as we continue to move ahead. Bless everyone in the room. Be with those who are having sad times now because of loss of friends and accidents that have happened in our community. We ask all the blessings, in God's name. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer you a list of prayers, please, sir.
Stand and raise the flag for our pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not a divide, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Adoption of the agenda.
Chairman, I move for adoption of the agenda as presented.
Okay.
Do you have anything?
I'm sorry. No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Second? Second, and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right. Poes no? Well, adopt our agenda as presented. Consent agenda. I know that I need to abstain from the second item, Hyatt Run Apartments. Current or prospective contractual relationship with the party requesting board action. Supervisor Slaughter.
I also need to recuse myself from the Hyatt Run apartment because of an ongoing contractual arrangement.
All right. So consent agenda. Would the board like to handle it?
Move for adoption.
Motion to adopt is our second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Let's take a roll call. Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Abstains.
Abstain from item B on the consent, but all other items?
Item B, Swells?
Uh-oh.
Aye.
Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Does that include the, I don't remember, the H?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Sorry. It includes this B?
Yes.
I'll say no.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Sir, abstains from item two and votes aye on A and B, A and C. So consent agenda is approved. Oh, that will bring us to citizen comments. This is agenda items only that are not subject to public hearing. And that would be two. Are there any?
We had William Meyer sign up, but I'm wondering if that was intended to be for the public hearing rather than the citizen comment period?
Um, this...
Sorry? Now, okay?
Thank you, sir. Any magisterial district, please, sir?
Redbud. Thank you for letting me speak before the board. I have just a comment or concern. This one cent tax increase this year. Is that really enough?
It's not a question and answer, sir. We're happy to have your comments. And if you're trying to make a point, I think you have.
I think next year you're gonna get slammed. You're probably gonna ask for a three, five, seven, or ten cent increase. So we're just cutting yourself short, is what I'm saying. I know schools are growing. I know you need the money. And this area is growing by leaps and bounds. We know that. But I just thought a one cent increase was cutting it short. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? All right. Can we close the comment period? What are the supervisors' comments? Are there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Dunn?
Just have a very quick comment. Two weeks ago, we had a number of people come here talking about ALR and talking about maintenance issues, et cetera. The Board of Supervisors is a funding mechanism, but it's the school board that takes care of maintenance. In the last several years, the school board has had between half a million and a million dollars in unspent operating funds. And we appreciate the fact that they did not spend everything that was there just for the sake of spending it. But if you have concerns on maintenance, for example, on ALR, you really need to address the school board, not this body. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Bring us to committee appointments. Hanley Regional Library.
Mr. Chairman?
There are two applications. And a recommendation from the library board.
So, Mr. Chairman, there were three very well-qualified applications. There's one opening now, and there may be another opening later this year for Frederick County. But the board recommended Judy Lloyd, uh, sorry. The board recommended Amy Gray as the person to fill the spot. Amy Gray.
Is that a nomination?
Yes.
Or a motion?
That's a motion.
So we have a motion to appoint Ms. Amy Gray to the Hanley Regional Library Board? Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
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 Poes no? Ms. Gray is appointed. That will bring us to the Economic Development Authority.
Mr. Chairman?
Chairman Lofton?
I would move to nominate Heather McKay to the Economic Development Board. Authority, I'm sorry.
Okay. Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
We did have three applicants for this position, which I think is very telling of the interest that the people have in the economic development of Frederick County. All three of these would be very good members of that board. However, and being a member of that board, I look around and I see the representation that is there. The one thing that is not represented is our agribusiness, agritourism sector of the economy and in Frederick County and in Virginia. Agriculture is the largest industry predominantly in both those areas. That's why I would have nominated Heather McKay. She's a third-generation agricultural. And she and her family have been prominent members of the agricultural community for many years. And she would help round out that Economic Development Authority to encompass all the disciplines that we need to try to come up with a good, comprehensive plan to promote economic development in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Poes no? Ms. McKay is appointed. Social Services Board, Redbud.
We're still working on that, Mr. Chairman. We had a good candidate, but that candidate did not materialize.
Thank you, sir. Parks and Recs, Redbud.
On Parks and Rec, I'd like to nominate Chris Fourney. He's the existing person on the Parks and Rec. I sent you all some information on him. He is a excellent person who has contributed to that body.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second? Any discussion? Anyone? All those in favor, aye.
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 Poes no? Mr. Fourney is reappointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission. That brings us to the end of committee report. Main committee appointments. A request from the Commissioner of Revenue for refunds. Mr. Tierney?
Mr. Chairman, you have four requests before you, and I would point out that all four have been reviewed and okayed by the county attorney. The first request is from Federal Express Corporation for $2,832.03. This is a personal property rebate for vehicles that were either sold or moved from the locality.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate if we handled all four requests since the attorney has reviewed all four of them at the same time?
Our normal procedure, but let's take them individually.
Okay.
Wish to?
I would like to make a motion then that we approve the refund to Federal Express in the amount of $2,832.03 and the corresponding supplemental appropriation.
All right, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the next request is for the Merrimack Capital Company LLC in the amount of $3,934.76. And this is an exoneration of personal property taxes for 2017 for leased assets that were incorrectly reported for personal property and were discovered in 2018.
Thank you, sir. Heard the motion. How would the board like to handle it?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of a refund for Merrimack Capital Company in the amount of $3,934.76 and the corresponding supplemental appropriation.
Heard the motion.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
The next is a request from D.L. Peterson Trust in the amount of $7,517.92. It's exoneration of personal property tax for 2016 and 2017 for vehicles that were either sold or moved from the locality.
The board like to handle it.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the refund to D.L. Peterson Trust in the amount of $7,517.92 and the corresponding supplemental appropriation.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Hearing none. Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
And the final one, Mr. Chairman, is for Judy Excavation and Landscaping in the amount of $7,693.04. The exoneration is for business license taxes for 2016. The adjustment is due to taxes filed under Judy Excavating and Landscaping but then refiled under the entity's new name.
Heard them. Heard the... How would the board like to handle it?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion?
Does that include the...
Supplemental appropriation?
Yes. Okay.
That was your intent, was it not?
Yes.
Okay. Second concurred. All right. Any further discussion? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. I will wind up the request from the Commissioner. Next we come to a public hearing. Outdoor festival permit of Waveland Farms LLC.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request for a festival permit to be held Saturday, April 21st at 10:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. on the grounds of 1211 Marble Road. And the event is a wedding. I believe the applicant is here or someone representing the application. If there's questions.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Come forward, please. If we could have your name, Magisterial District, please.
Um, Opekin. I'm sorry, Back Creek. Back Creek, and my name is Cindy Lehman.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything you'd like to add?
Uh, yes. We are trying to promote ag business and ag tourism. And we feel that the use of our farm to provide wedding venues is a nice use. It will help preserve and maintain the farm and a historical home that's there that was built in 1842. And we have complied with all requirements through the Health Department and VDOT as they've stipulated for us to use the facility. So I'm happy to answer any other questions, but that's what we're trying to achieve.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Does the board have any questions? Anyone?
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning this outdoor festival permit request? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion. How would the board like to handle this one? It's Back Creek.
Back Creek. I would move for approval of the application for the outdoor festival permit of Waveland Farms.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Supervisor Lofton?
Several months ago, I met with the Lehmans out there at their farm to go over the potential for holding festivals in that area. One concern I had was the entrance that currently exists to the farm. And through extraordinary efforts by Mrs. Lehman, they actually purchased land to put in another entrance that is much, much safer than the one that they had. And I thank them for that effort to make this possible.
Any other discussion? Anyone? Are we ready? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries, and the festival permit is approved. Thank you. All right. That'll bring us to a public hearing on the fiscal year 1819 budget. If you all will be patient and bear with me, the board has adopted procedure for such things. So this is a public hearing. It's been called by the Board of Supervisors pursuant to the requirements of the Code of Virginia to receive comments on the proposed budget and tax levies for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. This budget is prepared for information and fiscal planning purposes only. So that the Board of Supervisors may have the benefit of your comments, it's our desire to have an orderly hearing. In an effort to achieve this, the following rules of order will prevail. All speakers must be recognized by the chair. Each speaker should come to the podium and address their comments directly to the Board of Supervisors. You would state your name and your magisterial district, please. Each speaker should be as brief as possible and limit his or her remarks to no more than three minutes, please. No speakers will be allowed to speak more than once until all who wish to speak have had a chance to do so. Speakers are encouraged to be direct, to the point, and as brief as possible. It is the purpose of this hearing to receive your comments about the proposed budget. It is not the purpose of this hearing for the board to debate questions, engage in debate with speakers, or to make comments themselves. It's not intended to be a debate, and comments to the audience are not appropriate. Unruly or rude behavior will not be tolerated, and the board reserves the right to limit the length of the hearing, especially if no new information is being presented. Thank you for your patience. Mr. Tierney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a roughly 10-minute presentation I'd like to try and give to get everybody kind of on the same page as to where we are with this proposed budget. To start, as the board is well aware, the adoption of any budget is a process. And that process began for us back in October with the distribution of budget directives to all the departments and agencies that are part of our budget. Those budget packages were due back in November, and our finance department then compiles all that information to put it into a budget that we can begin to work with. The board held their first budget work session back in December. We've had numerous meetings, both internally as staff, and then the board has had a number of work sessions with primarily public safety functions, but also joint work sessions with the school board to discuss numbers and try and get us to where we are tonight. March 28th, as you can see, public hearing. That's this evening. You have one more work session scheduled next week, and then the board is scheduled to adopt a budget on the 11th. That budget would take effect July 1st. At the very beginning of the budget process, the board stated their priorities and objectives, and that was distributed as part of our budget directives to all the departments. Priorities that were stated were public safety and education needs are of highest priority. Provide responsible stewardship of county funds to ensure the best services possible for the funds expended. Preserve fund balance at an appropriate level in keeping with the board's policy and best practices, and to continue to try and minimize government wherever possible. In addition to those board directives, there were some administrative objectives that we tried to achieve. We looked to reduce operating costs and promote efficiencies wherever possible. We want to try and address our public safety needs. We want to provide sufficient employee compensation to retain quality staff, provide technology upgrades, and ensure that equipment and infrastructure are up to date and secure, and address some critical staffing shortages. So begin to look into the actual numbers and where we started out. We have some additional funding to work with. Our natural revenue growth is estimated to be about $6 million. There's a proposed one-cent tax increase that would derive approximately another $1 million. Increase in categorical funding, which is obligated to various functions of about .6 million. A proposed increase in the personal property tax on airplanes that would yield about $50,000. And in the current FY '18 budget, we had set aside $4.3 million for budget and debt service. In the proposed FY '19 budget, that $4.3 million is no longer set aside. So we're making use of that for other things. Additional expenditures, the school operating fund is receiving an additional $5.96 million in their transfer. The general fund is receiving $3.76 million of additional funding. Conversely, the proposed FY '19 budget used $6.8 million less of our fund balance. In our last fiscal year, we allocated $5.4 million to one-time capital costs, and we've reduced operating by 1.4. So looking at the requests, our general fund requests, we had 35 full-time positions in those requests. We had capital requests in excess of $9 million, other operating increases of over $4 million, which totaled, as you can see, roughly $15.5 million. Of those requests, this budget proposes to fund $3.76 million of those requests. School requests, the school's operating budget was requested for an increase in funding of $6.6 million. The proposed budget provides $5.9. Schools debt service for the coming year is $14.5 million. We've covered that with the proposal. The schools also requested $2.7 million in capital. That is not provided for in this budget. General fund, the positions I mentioned, there was 35. Here's a breakdown of those positions. And as you can see, 20 fire and rescue personnel, eight sheriffs, 28 of the 35 positions are public safety-related. School position requests, again, the bulk of those are instructional positions, 30 instructional positions, nine support staff, a part-time driver, and a mechanic. Looking at the entire FY '19 budget, it's just under $320 million. Where does that money come from? You can see from the slide that the vast majority of the funding, as the pie demonstrates, 39% comes from our property taxes. The next highest amount comes from estate revenue of 31%. Where does it go? 65% of the budget goes towards schools, another 19% for public safety. The remaining 16% covers everything else. Delving more detail into the general fund, again, you can see that the vast majority of the funding that makes up the general fund comes from our personal property, or I'm sorry, our property taxes. Personal property tax and our real estate tax combined provide for 68%, along with other machinery and tools and some other miscellaneous taxes. Those two taxes, personal property and real estate, are about each $50 million, $59 and $52 million respectively. Terms of expenditures, this again reflects that the majority of our general fund goes in a transfer, and 54% of the general fund is allocated to schools, and then another 21% public safety. I mentioned there's little or no capital in this budget. The schools had a number of capital projects that are listed here. Funding is not provided for these projects in the proposed budget. Likewise, on the general fund side, we had a number of projects and initiatives that were not and are not proposed to be addressed in this budget. Looking at general fund budget history, as you can see, we go back to 2015 here. There's been a steady increase in our general fund. This year compared to last year, the proposed budget versus the budget we're in, you can see that that increase is relatively small. It's an increase of less than 1%. School operating fund revenues, again, just showing it in a slightly different way. The majority of the schools' increased funding comes from the increase in the transfer from the general fund. They're also receiving an estimated $3.5 million additional state funds, and about a half million in federal funds. All told, their increase is roughly 4.5, or I'm sorry, 9.4 million. Proposed school operating fund, again, state revenue 47%. The transfer from the general fund accounts for 49%, the largest share, more than the state to fund the schools. School operating fund budget, much like the others that you've seen, has increased steadily for the last number of years. The increase in this proposed budget from last year is roughly 6%. Transfer to school operating, again, just reflecting in a different way, has steadily increased. Increase in the transfer this year versus last year is just under 8%. We like to take a look at where we are relative to surrounding and comparable localities in terms of our real estate tax rate when we look at the budget. And as you can see, we're down near the bottom at 60 cents in what our rates are. I know that some of these localities have proposed increases in their budget. I read where Shenandoah has a six cent increase that they're considering, so we may be lower when it's all said and done. Conversely, our personal property tax rate is one of the highest in the area. And as I mentioned earlier, both these property taxes yield similar amounts of dollars for us, roughly $52 million for the personal property and $59 for real estate. Another sort of benchmark, if you will, median income ours versus surrounding and comparable localities, we're about in the middle of the spread, as you can see. Per capita expenditures for us and similar localities, again, this is for 2016, we're about the middle of the pack. So in summary, we've got a projected $7.8 million increase in revenue, which is roughly 4.3%. $6 million of that is derived from just the natural increase. $1 million would be derived from the proposed one-cent tax increase. We're also looking at a $6.8 million reduction in the use of fund balance. And again, a good portion of that was earmarked for capital. $5.4 million last year was used for capital expenditures. Our general fund request exceeded $15 million. We're funding 3.76 of that request, and a vast portion of the 3.76 is allocated towards public safety. public safety. Schools' operating transfer request was for $6.6 million. We're proposing to fund $5.96 of that request. Just in closing, as I stated at the very beginning, the stated priorities were for education and public safety to be a priority. I think that the budget numbers reflect that those priorities have been adhered to. The decision on the proposed one-cent tax increase has not been made, and the use of those funds, if we do, the increase has not yet been decided. There'll be continued discussions on positions to be funded as well as capital needs, and we're, at this point, unsure with the state of the state's budget what they may do with Medicare and other state funding sources. At this point, it's still quite uncertain. So that ends my presentation, Mr. Chairman, and available questions if you have them. Also, if you indulge me, I'd like to thank our finance director, Cheryl Schifler, our budget analyst, Jennifer Place, and Debbie County Commissioner Jase Tibbs, who have done yeoman's work to put this budget together and keep me out of trouble.
Well done. Thank you all. Any questions, Mr. Chairman, anyone? Thank you. If you'll straighten that mic for us, that probably helps the next segment. Thank you, sir. All right. This is a public hearing. Did anyone sign up on budget?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Kitty Hochman-Nicholas.
Name Magisterial District, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Kitty, from Hedges Brook Farm, Back Creek, Sturdy Haven, distinguished supervisors. I am also a member, elected board member from Frederick County for the Lord Fairfax Soil and Water Conservation Board. Where are we coming from, and where are we headed? Our dear Frederick County was founded in 1743, and after, it was named after Frederick the Prince of Wales. Frederick County was originally huge and included many counties, south and west of here, in Virginia and West Virginia. The population of Frederick County in the 1850s was 15,975, and now we have grown to over 78,000 residents, along with growth comes change. In the 1850s, when our family, Aaron Bright, came here from Pennsylvania, he started the apple business, which would continue for four generations. During that time, 98% of the population were farmers. Now it is less than 1% over all of the United States of America. People, industries, and not caring have changed our air, land, and water. When I was growing up, we could swim, fish for trout, and seine for bait in the Opeckin Creek. Now all that has disappeared. Where are we going? We have many things to correct, as far as pesticides, erosion, and pollution. We need your help. It is not just Marietta Walls, Kather, and I, it is everyone in this room and on this board responsible for making a difference and making it better. But we do have good news. The Potomac Conservancy, the Potomac River has gone from a D to a B rating. Pollutants are on the decline, native fish and wildlife are returning, and more of our upstream forests are under protection. We are also members of the Chesapeake Bay Watershed, starting with the Opeckin Creek and Cedar Creek. We are the beginning of this success. I personally am a farmer. I want to see it continue, and we need your help with $3,000 more of our funding. We all can make it better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Hobbs?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, and supervisors, and everyone else in the room, I am here as your elected official from the Lord Fairfax Soil and Water District, just like Kitty. Both of us serve on a board to help make sure our water quality is the best that we can make it. Through the years, Frederick County has reduced the amount of money that they have given towards helping preserve our waterways. This year is proposed to put $7,000 towards helping support. We have five employees that run this district, and we are in, aren't it, with us are Clark County, Shenandoah County, Warren County, and City of Winchester. So between these five jurisdictions, we have five employees, and they do have an office in Strasburg. These employees help everyone in this area apply for money that's available to preserve our waterways. And through their help, we've been able to, each year, recover about a half million dollars that come back to our area to plant trees, fence cows out of waters. The other things that's currently that we're stepping up on are doing rain gardens, doing paving that's permeable. We have conservation landscaping money, urban gardens, and the urban gardens, they've just gotten a $50,000 grant that helped to provide fresh foods for low-income families. So all the money that we give, the $7,000, goes to help support these five staff members. In 2009, our county gave $10,000 to help support these five people. So over the years, to me, going from $10,000 down to $7,000 means that we don't care what our water quality is. And water quality, to me, affects everybody in this room. There are a lot of things in our budget, but I do feel that our water, being a veterinarian for our area, knowing how important health is, and how much cancer we see, and how much disease we see, we need to make sure that our waterways stay as pure as possible. So instead of cutting the funds to help our waterways, personally, I do agree with Kitty, we need to increase back up to our $10,000 limit that we were giving before to help those technicians bring back more money to our area so we can protect our waterways. So thank you very much, and you all have a great day.
Thank you.
And clean water.
Steve Kluss.
Chairman, Steve Kluss, I'm the president of the Northern Shenandoah Volty Substance Abuse Coalition. I'm from the Stonewall District. I'd like to thank you very much for your support of us in the past, and these dollars that you provide for us are our core funding and give us sustainability that we would not otherwise have. I want to talk to you very quickly, I know this time is of the essence. Our drug treatment court started on August 16th in 2016. It's been 19 months. We have 25 clients that have gone through, 14 of which were Frederick County participants. We currently have 13 participants with four more in the pipeline. It is our goal to have 25 participants by the end of the year. We recently were the beneficiary of kaleidoscope funding of rotaries, and we're going to use that money to get drug treatment, drug testing kits to the families of those in need in our community. We're going to do it through the school systems in other means, and I'm not going to talk at length about that. We also, this year, through a United Way grant, had monies to do a peer-to-peer program, peer-to-peer recovery, and it's been very successful. We've been using it in our drug treatment court, the Department of Social Services is using it, and we're going to get involved with Winchester Medical Center in the near future. And once again, thank you very much for what you're doing for us.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jerry Swager, and I'm a resident of the Gainesboro District in Frederick County. Opportunity, it's a word that holds so much promise. Opportunity is defined as a set of circumstances that makes it possible to do something, and a good chance for advancement or progress. Each year, when we reach budget season around here, this Board of Supervisors has many opportunities to do things that cause advancement or progress in Frederick County, and we all understand the needs often outweigh the opportunities that exist, so decisions must be made. However, we cannot talk about possibility or advancement or progress in this community without considering the opportunities that abound in Frederick County as a result of Frederick County Public Schools. Why? Because our schools are filled to the brim with students who are overflowing with promise, who are ripe for advancement, who thrive on hope, and who deserve a fighting chance. It should be possible for the young people in this community to attend classes where teachers can focus on rigorous teaching and learning experiences without having to worry about not having the room to learn, or the materials they need, or the time to plan, or even the correct oxygen levels in the room. It should be possible for our students to have a multitude of choices related to fields of study or electives without having to fall back on just a few because we can't afford to hire staff needed to teach specific courses. It should be possible for children to learn in classrooms that aren't overcrowded and in schools that aren't overloaded, and to get there on buses that are not 20 years old. As a community, we seek opportunity and growth, and we celebrate progress and advancement, except in our schools. We all welcome businesses like Amazon and the FBI and Navy Federal with open arms because their presence means promise. And yet, when the businesses bring people, and the people bring children, we suddenly shrink away from the growth and the promise and the progress because it means we must stand up and put our money where our mouth is. Do we really want advancement? Do we really believe in opportunity? We don't always show it very well. My father used to tell my sisters and me, when we were young, to always take advantage of the opportunity to get an education because education was the one thing, once you had it, no one could ever take away from you. You, as a board, have the choice to provide future generations of students with the opportunities to receive the very best education possible. Don't choose to take it away from them before they even have a chance. As a constituent, a citizen, and a parent in this county, I urge you to fully support the Frederick County School Board's budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Board Supervisors, my name's John Wright. I'm a resident of the Red Bud District. Sorry. I'm also president of the Frederick County Professional Firefighters Association. Here tonight with a couple of our guys who are off shift this evening, and we're here to thank you, thank the Board of Supervisors, thank the county administration for the commitment that you've shown in addressing critical public safety needs. Last year, our department leadership presented a plan to address an increasing demand for fire and rescue services. The increased call volume was exacerbated by decreasing in volunteerism and community growth. This plan recommended increased staffing from two firefighters per shift to four firefighters per shift at the five busiest stations in the county. Last year, you funded an increase of two personnel at the Stevens City Fire Station located in the Opeckin District and the Greenwood Fire Station located in the Red Bud District. Those are the two busiest fire and rescue stations in Frederick County, and this has greatly, because of your efforts, this has greatly aided our ability to respond to calls for service. This year's budget, from Chief Lendenberg, would allow two additional fire and rescue stations to increase their staffing from two firefighters per shift to four firefighters per shift. Those stations respectively are Millwood Fire Station located in the Shawnee District and Round Hill Fire Station located in the Back Creek District. These are the third and fourth busiest fire and rescue stations, respectively, in Frederick County. This, again, will further enhance our response capabilities and address increased call and service demand. The fire and rescue department's budget request for fiscal year 2019 includes 20 additional fire and rescue positions, 14 firefighters, three EMS supervisors, two training officers, and one fire marshal. Those additional, the 14 firefighters I spoke of would address the two additional stations of upstaffing. The three additional EMS supervisors, those are new positions that are desperately needed due to new state requirements from the Office of Health EMS, as well as requirements from the General Assembly. The two training officers, as we grow and we offer more classes, both to career firefighters as well as volunteers in the surrounding area, we need more than the two existing, or excuse me, three existing training officers that we have. And the last is a fire marshal. We need an additional fire marshal position to help with meeting with prevention as well as inspections. So we encourage the board to approve the additional staffing and budget requests to continue the implementation of the plan. This will allow our department to meet the increased demand for fire and rescue services and address critical public safety issues. Thank you for your support over the recent years.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, those are all the signatures I have.
Okay. Well, this is a public hearing concerning the upcoming budget. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the budget? Anyone?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Shelley Andrews, and I am a resident of the Red Bud District. I am a mother of two public school students and a 16-year veteran educator of Frederick County. Currently, I help lead the mighty Bulldogs at the beautiful, albeit very crowded, James Wood Middle. I am here to implore you to be a forward-thinking board for the sake of all your constituents. Each year, as you know, our community grows more and more in population, and the lion's share of those new residents are not in their retirement years. My school alone, which mostly pulls from the Red Bud and Stonewall Districts, has grown by over 100 students in just two school years, or by 11%. Consequently, I am here to ask for more adequate funding of all our public services. While I understand that what is done is done, advertising a maximum one-cent increase kicks the can farther down the road, creating even more critical needs than currently exist. These decisions make the disparity worse and the burnout more likely. While clearly my experience is based in schools, I know that our brothers and sisters with the Sheriff's Department, EMS, and public services all feel the crush of doing more with less every day. We often work side by side, in fact, addressing community needs. At this point, I can't truly equate the board's actions with frugality, for not funding needed projects and staff now make it even more expensive to acquire those resources in the future. So basically, I'm asking you to save me and all of the other taxpayers in the county money on things we're going to need. If the board had advertised and voted for an increase of three cents on the tax rate this year, the average homes, sorry, the average homes taxes would have increased from $1,500 to $1,575 a year, or just $6 a month in change. That is a very manageable burden for constituents to share. And unlike what I read earlier today in the paper, I do not believe that residents ever stop using our division's services. Strong support for education is an investment in the community that ensures the community can be continually successful for years to come, and I, for one, want a community in which my children will want to come back with their children. So I implore you, take action to save our constituents' money now. Invest in deputies, invest in schools, invest in firefighters now. Making forward-thinking decisions may not be popular with a cadre of residents who typically oppose any funding request from county services, but you will be doing what is right in the long run for a majority of your constituents. Please vote for the one-cent increase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board members? What she said. Good evening. My name's John Lamanna. I'm chairman of the Frederick County School Board and resident of the Stonewall District. I'm here tonight to ask the board to fully fund the school board budget as presented and proposed by the superintendent of schools. As has been the case for the last several years, the proposed school budget only includes our highest priority needs, not all of our needs. I, along with other members of the school board, understand the challenges the Board of Supervisors face as it seeks to balance the needs of the growing community with a desire to keep the tax rate low. As a result, we have worked to bring forward only those funding requests needed to address our most critical needs. In fact, 8.2 million in requests were cut from the budget prior to the superintendent presenting it as a proposal to the school board. The board has advised the superintendent to include all critical needs when we plan and present the budget proposal for fiscal year 20. We believe this will give the Board of Supervisors a more accurate picture of school funding needs. One area of particular concern... One area of particular concern is our request for an additional 2.7 million for the School Capital Projects Fund. Since the request was not included in the budget that was advertised for public hearing tonight, our assumption is that it's your intention not to fund it. This is extremely concerning, in that our school division has a number of aging facilities that are overcrowded and need to be properly maintained in order to ensure the students have safe and secure facilities in which to learn. Certainly, we can agree that the facility maintenance is an investment that saves money in the long run, and 36 modules is not the answer to overcrowded schools. Currently, 12 of our 18 schools are overcapacity, and five of the 12 schools that are overcrowded are in excess of 110% of the program capacity. Overcrowded, aging facilities are costly to maintain, and the 2.7 million requested for the capital project funds is needed to address critical needs, such as repairing roofs, replacing home, placing HVAC systems, a fire alarm system, and improving the safety and visibility on Route 522 at the entrance of the Gainsborough Elementary Frederick County Middle School campus. You see, we have the maintenance crew, we have the skill, and we have the will. What we need is we need the funds. And I think perhaps that's why the Board of Supervisors has been receiving calls. It's the funds that are needed. We have the skill, we have the ability, we have the will to fix it. It has been suggested that some of these projects can be addressed with school funds that are unobligated at the conclusion of the current fiscal year. The school budget runs accurate and tight, with usually less than 1% remaining as unobligated. I can say with great certainty that any unobligated surplus we have at the end of the year will not come close to addressing these high priority needs. Further, delaying these projects puts us in a difficult position of having to be reactive to problems instead of proactively working to avoid them. When serving nearly 14,000 students, being proactive is a requirement, not an option. Finally, I'd like to voice appreciation for the outstanding relationship the school division enjoys with the Sheriff's Office, and ask that you provide additional funding to support placing more school resource officers in our schools. Recently, the school division decided to proceed with plans to install buzz-in entry systems at those schools that are currently not equipped with such a system. Doing so within our existing budget will require other projects to be postponed, but the safety of our community's children is of the utmost importance. With that in mind, I would ask you to provide the Sheriff's Office with the funding needed to hire additional SROs with a goal of ultimately having one in each of our schools. With that, I thank you, and I look forward to our continued work together in support and to the benefit of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kurt?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Joy Kirk. I am the president of the Frederick County Education Association and a resident of the Back Creek District. I could stand here and talk about the impact of a one-cent tax increase on the average family. According to Zillow today, the average home in Frederick County is $242,000, so that one cent is $24.20. I could talk about who paid for each of us to go to school. In my case, it was several different community taxpayers in Pennsylvania. I don't know if people attended meetings not wanting to fund the schools, but I would like to say thank you to the community leaders who made tough calls and funded my public schooling. I could talk about why everyone needs to contribute to a community. That is how it works, grows, and flourishes. I could talk about how a 50% tax hike would put us on par with other communities in this state. I could talk about that as a community grows, natural revenue grows. I could talk about a lot of things, but I'm going to talk about my colleagues and students. I do not know one person who went into teaching to be rich and famous. In fact, those who I have asked went into the field to make a difference. However, they also want to be able to live comfortably in the community they serve. They want to be able to purchase a home, raise children, and report to their school. My colleagues go above and beyond. Frederick County Public School employees across this county come in early and stay late to provide enrichment or remediation for their students. Many teachers use lunch as a time to help struggling students and provide remediation. Faculty and staff volunteer time to make athletic events, clubs, dances, key content nights, such as math night, reading night, ESL night, and more, happen at our schools all year long. These individuals are giving of their own time without hesitation because they know they are making a difference. Many educators also volunteer their time to help with community service events on weekends and in the evening because they make a difference for our students and in our community. Our students, they are doing great things. I hope everyone in this room has had the opportunity to attend or watch the Awards of Excellence program that happens at our School Board meetings each month. Our students are state and national champions. Our students are competing at the regional, state, and national levels for FFA, FBLA, Geography B's, Destination Imagination, History Day, Science Fairs, and the list goes on, and I'm not talking Performing Arts and Athletes. And these kids, they're not just showing up, they're winning awards and recognition for our community. The students are doing the work, and behind the scenes are teachers, sponsors, and parents. Our students make a difference in this community. They will make a difference in the future if we create a community they want to return to as adults, if we create a community they want to return to and raise a family, if we create a community that is vibrant and forward-moving. The future of this community is now, and it needs funding. Please, do the one cent tax increase this year, but continue the journey that has started in looking for alternative paths and solutions for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Carrie Anne Kite, and I am a homeowner in the Shawnee District. I am here in support of the tax increase. It is necessary, although I believe it is not enough. Our growing community is outpacing our infrastructure, and this budget does not address all of that adequately. I applaud the increase in the fire and rescue positions that you've promised, and it will help to alleviate overtime pay, which also helps the budget in the long run. However, the budget does not address some of the maintenance needs in the school division and other staffing needs throughout the county. I've sat and watched at many of these Board members, I mean, Board of Supervisor meetings, and a common complaint is that the school division is costing our county too much and that they take too much, and that apparently sometimes they're just greedy. I wanted to talk a little bit about numbers, and I looked through last year's budget and a little bit on what was offered this time. And on page 24 of last year's budget, they had a 10-year budget comparison chart. And in those 10 years, our county budget has increased by 18.75% over that 10-year period, and that's in line with the real estate revenue that's also increased. That was about 18.1%. And over that same 10-year period, the school fund budget, that's increased by 17.9%. So, we are staying below what our county budget is in terms of percentages. The general funds budget has increased by 27% over the last 10 years, so it's not the School Board that's getting really, you know, overblown. And then towards the end of that budget, there's really great pie charts that talk about increasing budgets from what they are the previous years. And out of the eight separate departments that are listed, the School Board actually came in at, there were five departments that increased their budgets higher than, that came in at a higher percentage. The School Board had increased their budget by only 5.7% from the 2016, 17 to 2017, 18 year. And there were five departments out of eight who increased their budgets by a greater margin. Public Safety came in at 17.37% higher. General Government was 10.57% higher. Health and Welfare was 6.57% higher, and Public Works was 5.66 higher. And the Judicial Administration came in at 5.08 higher than their previous year's budget. But somehow, it's the schools that are being vilified for their spending when they are not, they're not outspending everybody else. It's just, they take a larger part of the budget because they are servicing about 25% of our population. They are the largest employer. It talks on page 207 of the budget that the population under 18 is 25.1% currently, and the population of over 65 is 12.7% of our county's population. So, I just want to say that, again, we are serving, the schools are serving the largest portion of this population who don't have a vote. So, I'm here as a parent, on, you know, on behalf of my kids and other parents around to say, please, support the schools, fund them, they need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi, Board of Supervisors. I'm Jason Triceter from the Shawnee District, and I do want to talk about supporting the 1% tax increase, although many people have said it's not enough, but it's a start. It's a start in the right direction. You know, and I watched, that was a wonderful presentation, you did an excellent job. And through all those graphs and all those charts, I noticed that Frederick County was usually the median, right about the middle, except for when we got to the tax rate. We were by far way at the bottom, and somebody even said that Shenandoah may be raising and even change it so that we're lower. You know, perhaps that's why we're having issues with fulfilling these needs of the community and meeting these budgets, that we have the lowest tax rate. You know, I heard Supervisor Dunn state earlier that, you know, building maintenance concerns were to be addressed to the School Board. And I agree with that, but when we got to the slide, we very went quickly by it that none of those improvement plans were funded. You know, and I'm not sure how they are going to answer to those questions that they're responsible for and how they're going to take care of those needs without funding to do so. And I agree that they are going to be held responsible for that, and they should, but they're going to need funding to do that. You know, I'm not, all of these services that we've talked about today, fire and rescue, schools, the Sheriff's Department, two ladies spoke about clean wa, I mean, clean water. Is there anybody that doesn't value clean water here? That's kind of a no-brainer for us. We rely on that. And, you know, a lower tax rate, what I think that does is it encourages more growth in our county. It's going to bring in more people, and we're going to need more services as more people move into our county. By raising our tax rate, starting with 1%, but even by more, so that we're more the median of our local counties, will help us both control the growth of our county, not just have it expand so fast that we can't keep up, but at the same time, it'll allow us to provide those services that our community needs, all of the services, fire and rescue, sheriffs, and schools. So, I ask that you do support this 1% tax increase and consider supporting increases in the future as well. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Sorry to be number two. Again.
You're good.
I am employed...
Folks at home can't hear your comments if you don't use it.
I am employed at Spring Arbor. Let me tell you, people, the Round Hill Rescue Squad comes within three to five minutes when these people are sick. They take in us, the National Lutheran Home, and that's been there, what, three years now? Four, and Onboy. Those guys are busy. And when we call them, they come right away. This could be a life-and-death situation. If you need a position filled there, there's one where you need it. And I see it three and four times a week. So, if there's a vacancy at Round Hill Fire, fill it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Mr. Graver? Yes, sir.
Sean Graver, Back Creek District. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. You know, this is our one time during the year that we get to be the adults in the room. When the children are asking for more money, we have to look at the requests and dole out the money or the allowances appropriately. I sit back and look at some of the recent events, the student walkout that happened a little over a week ago. You know, my tax dollars paid for that. My tax dollars were paying for those teachers to be there, but those students weren't being taught. And I dare say, we were putting our students at risk outside after we advertised that we were going to have a walkout. Just 20 years of emergency management stuff coming to mind. Heard a lot of numbers here. I'm going to tell you where I got my numbers. I went to the Virginia Officer Board of Education. You know, our SOLs, we're at the 50 percentile for most of them in reading, writing, and arithmetic. But you know, we're in, at the 10% level for funding, the top 10% level for funding statewide per student. Those aren't my numbers. That's the State Board of Education. You know, we're paying for Cadillacs, but we're driving Kiahs. We're getting kids that aren't meeting the standards, but we're paying for something that's far greater. You know, I'm sorry that the School Board feels that the Board isn't listening, the Board of Supervisors aren't listening. I saw an article by our very own Josh Janey, our local newspaper, the other week, that said their feelings were hurt because of funding. Well, I'm sorry, but I thought that our Board, our School Board, were adults, not first graders. We have to work with the funds that are given, and the funds that are given have been quite good over the last five years. You know, there've been a lot of numbers listed this evening, and I've taken some of the numbers, and I've looked at the county website just as for part of it. One number that you've heard recently was the 25% of the population's being served by our school teachers. Well, I beg to differ. If you look at our county census, it's around 85,000. That isn't my numbers, those are obviously census figures. If you look at the School Board enrollment, it's about 13,500, 13,600, based off of the numbers that I've seen presented to me. What I would ask you to do is, is not go by people's feelings, which a lot have been presented here tonight, but look at the facts. I presented to you some facts and how to verify my facts. Please be the responsible adults in the room. You know, a penny might not seem like much, but my taxes have went up 40% if this tax increase goes up another cent over the last four years. 40% is a lot of money. It's not just $23 or $26. It's going to be well over a third of what I was paying just four years ago if this goes through, 40%. Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen. Please do not raise my taxes, please, not even one cent.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone? Dr. Savine?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'm Dave Savine, Superintendent of Frederick County Public Schools. Frederick County is growing and changing in many ways. More people are moving into our community, and school enrollment is climbing as a result. As the county's population increases, the demand on services also grows. We've been experiencing this in our schools for several years and have been taking steps to not only serve a growing student population, but one that's more diverse with many more needs. For some students, we have to work with community partners to help ensure their basic needs, such as food, as well as housing, are met. For others, it's helping accommodate a special learning need. Unfortunately, we're also seeing an increasing number of students, particularly our youngest learners, who are experiencing mental health issues and some needs, those needs that need additional support. The challenge in putting forth a school budget is prioritizing our many needs while being mindful of the limited resources that are available and the desire to keep taxes low. As Dr. Lamanna mentioned earlier, the budget I presented to the School Board last month only represented the school division's highest priority needs, not all of our needs. 8.2 million dollars worth of requests were cut before I presented my budget proposal to the School Board. My concern, not just for the school division, but for the county as a whole, is that we cannot continue to delay addressing the needs of our community. I'm speaking of the needs not only within the school division, but also within the Sheriff's Office, the Fire and Rescue Department, et cetera. Unfortunately, I believe a perfect storm is brewing. Our community is continuing to grow, and many of our school facilities are overcrowded and in need of substantial renovation. In addition, our law enforcement and emergency services providers are being stretched to the limit. These needs are not going away, and it's imperative that we work together to develop plans to proactively address them. Most importantly, we have to commit to executing the plans that are developed in a timely manner. Our students, their families, and all our county residents deserve nothing less. With all this in mind, I respectfully ask that you fully fund the school's budget for the FY 2019 year, including the 2.7 million requested in the Capital Projects Fund to address critical maintenance needs at our facilities. We need to continue working together to address these needs and others across the community to ensure we protect the high quality of life that's leading many to make Frederick County home. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Not quite yet, Ms. Kurt. We'll come back to you. Yes, ma'am, come ahead.
My name's Carrie Carmichael. I'm from the Shawnee District. Thank you for...
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I took a look at the proposed budget that was included in the agenda, and I looked at some documentation from the school board about what they needed for this year. And I'm not an expert, but by my calculations, we're severely underfunding our school in certain areas. Currently, the school board asked for about $170 million, and you guys are proposing $168 million, which is a big difference. The proposed school budget included things like additional teachers and aides, special education instruction and support, and more school buses, drivers, and aides. These are critical needs. How do you decide between having adequate numbers of teachers for kids and giving employees a small, modest salary increase and not raising taxes? I don't think the one cent is going to be enough, but I do urge you to support it because it's all we have at the moment. And also, I wanted to talk about the school capital projects funds. The school board asked for $3 million about, and it seems from the slides that I saw that you're not proposing to fund any of it. And I'm just curious as to how you can justify not funding this request. It's for things like HVAC systems at James Wood High and Apple Pie Ridge, roof replacement at a couple of buildings, safety improvements to Route 522, and a fire alarm replacement at Bass Hoover Elementary School. Are we really not going to replace fire alarms in an elementary school because we don't want to raise our taxes? These are all high-priority projects, and I really am concerned that they may not be funded and they may have an adverse impact on our students. To summarize, I ask that you pass the one-cent real estate tax increase, even though clearly we need more than one cent to pass a realistic budget. And I ask that you fund what the school board is requesting. You're forcing the school board to choose between multiple critical needs, and that hurts our children, and that hurts us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to the posed fiscal year 1819 budget? Anyone at all? Anyone?
Good evening. My name is Joy Kirk. I am President of the Frederick County Education Association and a resident of the Back Creek District, a 23-year veteran in Frederick County Public Schools. If you click on the Virginia Department of Education website, and you go to the left-hand column and click on Statistics and Report, and you enter Frederick County. Reading proficiency 76%, math proficiency 77%, science proficiency 83%, social studies proficiency 87%. Is there a roof per improvement? Yes. Are there students who need to work a little harder? Yes. Are there teachers who need to maybe make some modifications on how they're doing things? Yes. But by goodness, that far exceeds 50%, and I am proud to be a Frederick County Public School teacher.
That rally is not tolerated. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the budget? Anyone at all? And we'll close the public hearing. Your planning commission business, is there any Board of Liaison reports? Anyone?
I do.
Yes.
Sorry, I turned off my computer. Hold on. Apologize.
Take your time.
Okay, it's a very basic Frederick Water report, and if you need additional information, I can certainly get that to you. Okay, so at the last meeting, Frederick Water had a public hearing to adopt an annual sewer meter calibration fee as well as a plan review fee. They also adopted the annual wastewater subsidy calculation for the Lake Frederick development, and they adopted a new water and wastewater rates for the services provided to the town of Stevens City. And so if you want additional information on any of that, I will be happy to forward it to the board. And that's all.
Thank you. Questions? Okay. Any other Board Liaison reports? Anyone? Board of Supervisors comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We've had an interesting and interesting conversation. So for those of you that are in Red Bud, I'm more than willing to sit down and chat with you in more depth. We may or may not disagree, but I'd like to have your comments, your thoughts, and I'll give you my comments and thoughts in more depth than we can do right here. To the school budget, the school budget has increased approximately 5% or 6%. So for those that are saying that there's no funding, you can always argue that, you know, we should have more funding. But just recognize that between last year and this year, there is an increase. There's also a fact that this county has grown and is expected to continue to grow significantly. In the first 70 or 80 years of this county, it went from like 13,000 to 26,000. In the last 27 years, this county has grown by over 40,000 people. In the next 20 years, it's expected to grow another 30,000 or 40,000. So there's huge numbers there. I've sent everybody on the Board of Supervisors and to the school board, and I sent a copy to Dr. Lamanna, I don't know if he has a chance to forward it to the school board members, but I sent a proposal out to try to address the issue. If we do not do anything, then taxes are going to have to rise, in my opinion, someplace in the neighborhood, 50% in the next five years to go and meet the capital requests that the schools have made and the capital requests that the counties have made. The schools made a request of $259 million in the next five years. County capital request for the neighborhoods, $75 million. So to fund that, you're going to have to have a significant tax increase. I put out today in the newspaper a shorter version, but the board members here and the school board got a much longer version, on proposals. One is to raise the meals tax. Two is to have a capital cost recovery. These are going to take changes in state code, but if those that are interested in looking for alternatives, then we can work together. Winchester City has a meals tax, which if it were the same rate in Frederick County, would raise about $6 million. That's the equivalent of a $6 million tax increase. For every person that moves into Frederick County, families, the cost three years ago was approximately $19,000 as an expected cost to the county. If those people moving into the county simply paid their capital cost of $19,000 to $20,000, you would not necessarily have to raise a significant real estate tax. That would just deal with maintenance, but the capital cost would have been addressed. I'll give you an example. In Mercer County, New Jersey, for a house that's worth $340,000, you pay a real estate tax of almost $9,000. That person coming here, paying in the same $340,000 house, pays approximately $2,000. That's a $7,000 savings by moving from Mercer County, New Jersey, to Frederick County. If that person had simply paid $20,000 upfront when he bought his house, he would have recovered that capital cost in three years, and from that point on, he would be in a much lower tax bracket. That's just an example. We can go into details, and I'm almost finished, Mr. Chairman. We can go into details, but if you're interested in discussing options, that's one. Finally, in San Diego County, when people buy homes, their tax rate is frozen at that rate, and it may be adjusted for inflation so that those that are there, that move in will pay a higher rate. So there are options that I think that we as a community need to discuss. I'd be glad to discuss those with people, but I'll just throw that on the table. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other Board of Supervisors comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
So first, I want to thank all the constituents of Frederick County for coming out this evening to voice your opinion on the budget for our county. I really appreciate your input. As I was keeping a tally up here, we had 13 people speak. 12 of them supported tax increases for our county. I guess you could say 13 if you include Ms. Kirk speaking twice. And one against a tax increase. This is consistent with what I'm receiving from constituents in the community via email with the needs of our community. I especially agree with constituents stating that our community growth is outpacing our infrastructure and that our budget simply is going to cause us to be proactive rather than reactive. So although I will be supporting the one-cent tax increase in the time when we vote on the budget, I do not think that it is adequate for the needs of our county, and I just wanted to go on the record and say that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things. We've talked about the schools and the operating budget. It's very clear to me, after looking at the school board's maintenance and capital requests for funding, that many of our existing school facilities are in grave need of the types of repairs, that if we continue to ignore them, eventually they're going to result in our schools being uninhabitable. We as Board of Supervisors, and this is my opinion, cannot continue to ignore these issues, nor can the school board. These repairs must take top priority. They've been listed as such by the school board. We need to begin to appropriate money to the school board so that they can begin these repairs. We challenge them to do these things, and sometimes we get mad because they don't fix things, but it's hard to do if you don't have the funding. So I'd like to make sure that everyone understands that as Board Supervisor member, I think we need to begin appropriating the money for these critical issues for repairs and maintenance. And I'd like for the school board to make sure that that money that's appropriated is spent on those issues. Another issue is the Ailer School, which is being talked about. It's in the paper, and a lot of folks are talking about it. Spent an awful lot of time dealing with Ailer and talking about it, going through it on several different instances. And it's very clear to me that the condition that the school is in is partly a lack of funding for repairs and maintenance, and it's just old. I see this at a point where we as a board need to begin to plan to either renovate Ailer. I don't think that remodeling, if we're going to renovate, we're going to have to do a stage three, which is a lot of money in itself, or build a new middle school. I just don't think we can ignore that situation that we have at Ailer any longer. Even if we begin this process immediately, we have to start appropriating funds for maintenance and equipment and replacement at our other schools and at Ailer, and make sure that our children are attending schools in safe and healthy facilities, and that we offer them the educational environment that we should be doing, giving them the opportunity of an excellent education so they can be successful and productive citizens. And additionally, we as a board and community can ill afford to not continue to, or should to continue to ignore our public safety sector, fire, rescue, police departments, legitimate requests for funding to at least help them to meet the minimum coverage and requirements that we need and demand. And I say, yes, all these takes money, and monies we get from revenues and taxes generated by community businesses and county businesses and our citizens, as well as some from state funding, not much, and not much from the federal government. I'm against raising property taxes when there's no need. I'm against greed. I'm against raising property taxes when those in power abuse their power and misspend our monies. I'm not against raising taxes to pay for the necessary services that all of our citizens deserve and expect. As we move forward, I would encourage my fellow board members to begin working immediately to resolve these critical situations. And after all is said and done, the tax increase is necessary, then so be it. One last thing. As we go into our budget, I'd like for us to take a look at our parks and recreation. We had some parking situations out at Clearbrook, and I'd like for the board to maybe spend a little more time there and see what we might be able to do to help those folks out for parking at the new Clearbrook Park.
Anyone else? Thank you. Do you want to do it now?
I'd say...
Do it at the end, or you want to do it now?
We'll make discussion now. We have heard many calls tonight for funding the needs of the various departments, but in my opinion, the need is to spend more time with in-depth discovery and discussion about the wants versus the needs of all our operations. Are we perpetuating expense activities that may have had legitimate origins in prior years but are no longer valid due to our change in environment, culture, and operating structure? For all those who call for raising taxes, there is another contingent of taxpayers on fixed and/or limited incomes who struggle to meet current living expenses, including medical costs. Legitimate questions abound that need discussion and debate to bring us to a new base of operating expense levels based on the change in paradigms and dynamics of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, this is a portion of the meeting for citizens to share anything they'd like. If you can come to the podium, share your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please. Anyone? Okay.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dave Savine, Superintendent of Schools and resident of the Shawnee District. I want to take this opportunity to thank all board members and county administrator for once again holding another meeting, a joint meeting, where both boards work together transparently for the public, focusing on Robert E. Ailer projects. So I want to thank you publicly for that once again. Also during the meeting, I shared with you a packet of information, and I just want to draw board members' attention to Frederick County Public Schools' fast facts for 2017 and 18. This is chock full of a lot of good information regarding the school division. You commonly hear about the cost per pupil comparison. You can see that listed right here. We're below the state and regional average. Also, you'll see a listing of all the schools that we have in our county. And of particular note, since we were discussing school construction, I've just made note that since 2000, I count seven schools that have been built in Frederick County. It's been noted that our tax rate, and early in the presentation for Frederick, is 60... the real estate tax rate is 60 cents. It's tied for the lowest in Shenandoah Valley with Shenandoah County. Potentially, next year, we could be the lowest in northern Shenandoah Valley. Also, real estate tax rate in Virginia is 66 cents. On the... or the median real estate tax rate in Virginia is 66 cents. According to Fiscal Analytics in Richmond, Jim Regenbaum, that's 10% below the median. My point is, as we look at our facilities, we, since 2000, seven schools that have been built, and we're currently, we have students in, and our tax rate is currently 60 cents. Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Amber Wallin, and I'm from the Opeckin District. We've talked a lot about population growth tonight. The school building and grounds minutes from September 19th, 2017, expects population growth nearly double within the next 25 years. Not all of these populations are going to be families with children, but a lot of them probably are going to be. If we're talking about the options for Ailer rebuild or remodel, we talked a lot about this 20,000 square feet to keep the school same size it is. Where are these new kids going to go? Where is this overcrowding from Bird going to go? Where's the overcrowding from James Wood going to go? The 140,000-square-foot facility of a remodel or rebuild was going to allow for survival. It's not going to allow for livability, for growth, for expanse. All of these, for that same set of minutes, the middle schools are all supposed to exceed capacity by next year. And so now we've just met the needs again. We haven't looked ahead again. If you talk about rebuilding, remodeling at the same size, we're not solving, looking ahead, we're not solving problems. We're just trying to continue to stay that right at the same pace. And any one of those options provides for no growth in the hallways, common areas, cafeteria, educational collaboration. If we talk about a tier-two renovation, it's not going to address the other issues The major systems are still going to be failing. We talked about how the plumbing systems, 82% of its useful life, electrical components, 73% finishes, site elements around 50%. We're not going to address those issues. The walls are staying where they are. Halls are going to be too small. Majority of classrooms will still not meet Virginia standards for quality of square feet, requiring smaller-than-average desks. School goes either way to order desks for tiny... Some of the eighth graders, especially those eighth-grade boys, they literally don't fit in them. We are still not going to be talking... Kids are still going to be packed into the cafeteria. The majority of... The majority of classrooms are still going to be interior with air quality issues, no natural light. We're going to be stuck with these fads that are now flaws of 1960s design. It's not going to change the water drainage and location issues. It's still going to be short outlets. Bathrooms are not going to meet Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. If we're talking about the Tier 3 model, remodel, we're still talking about drainage and elevation is an issue, four years of upheaval, losing the cafeteria, restroom, sports, security and health concerns, constant shifting of classrooms to accommodate this constant building along the way. And these things are not concrete. The presentation reminded us that cost and quality of a remodel are not always reliable. We have no idea what's under the slab. We may be literally opening Pandora's Box. I understand the weariness of going forward with this project, but we must continue to plan for the future and growth, and make most fiscally responsible choices for long-term lower cost in the long run, rather than just continuing to meet what our needs are right now and not five or 10 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Carrie Tuckash, and I'm a resident of the Shawnee District. I've had the privilege to teach at Ailer Middle School for the past 18 years. The faculty and staff at our school is made up of some of the finest, most dedicated teachers in the field of education. They go over and above to meet the needs of our students and prepare them for the future. And our school, the student, is always our priority. Fifty years ago, when Ailer was built, education was very traditional. Desks were arranged in rows. The teacher was the main focus of the classroom. The 21st century learning, science is experimental, it's inquiry-based, and it's hands-on. This type of teaching requires flexible space where the students have the ability to move around and to collaborate with each other in order to problem-solve and gain deeper understandings of the world around them. Unfortunately, Ailer is not equipped to best handle teaching in the 21st century. My classroom has five rows of connected tables with no space in between. It's very similar to the long pews there, about the same length. There's 30 students that are crowded in the room with no space in between them. They work elbow to elbow. They have little space to spread out their materials. In my room, each table is bolted to the floor in the same spot they were in 1969. They're unable to be moved due to the gas pipes that stick up eight inches from the ground and the asbestos that lies underneath. Working in stations and in small groups is a monumental challenge. Imagine 30 students in the room in an area slightly bigger than those pews there, working in groups of three and four and moving around. It's nearly impossible. Students frequently use Chromebooks in the classroom. I have five outlets in my room. That includes the outlet for my computer, my projector, and a printer. So, when more than three students need to charge a Chromebook, which frequently happens, this creates a safety hazard with cords running everywhere. Of the six science classrooms in our building, four of them have sinks. The sink in my room drains very slowly. It took about an hour to drain today. That's not due to lack of maintenance. They are constantly working on our school, and they've constantly been in my classroom several times trying, you know, fixing things. It's due to the age of the building, not lack of maintenance. Our school has one science lab with tools for 600 students to share. Each station in our science lab has an outlet and a sink. Despite the constant maintenance efforts of our building, leaky faucets are continuously being fixed, and electrical is worked on frequently to replace the aging outlets. Tables in the science lab are also bolted to the floor due to the asbestos. The space between the five rows and the science lab is too narrow for many oversized students and growing eighth graders. The narrow spacing is a safety issue if an emergency occurs in the lab, and it restricts general movement, making it difficult for the teacher to move around and assist the students. Sadly, we even lack basic safety equipment such as eye wash stations. As the Board of Supervisors, we entrust you with the task of preparing our community for its future and setting up the infrastructure for successful growth. Schools are a direct reflection of our community's perceived value of education. Education is the foundations of success, success for our children, success for our community. Communities that value and invest in education tend to flourish. Just as a firm invests in physical capital, we need to invest in human capital to increase productivity, bring in innovative jobs, and earn higher incomes in our community. I urge you to appropriate the funds for a new Ailer Middle School.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. My name is Jerry Putt. I am a resident of Stonewall District. I am the father of children of, excuse me, of Frederick County Public Schools. My wife is a public educator, and I am the principal of Frederick County Middle School. And you have a very difficult decision before you about Ailer Middle School. The only thing that I'm going to encourage you to do is make an informed decision by coming and visiting us. So, what I want to do is offer you an open invitation to come to Frederick County Middle School, but my only condition is please do, please do so when the magic is happening. Come, come there when the kids are there, come there when the teachers are there, and watch the magic, and I think your decision would be a lot easier. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm Jason Tracetter from the Shawnee District. And like you said, you guys have an important decision to make, and a lot of people come and talk, and they're very passionate, and, and some people get a little upset talking about the tax rate and about building schools and about our fire and rescue. But, you know, what I'm asking is that you listen to the majority of what you hear. A lot of us as citizens of the community are coming out, we're asking you for help. We need an infrastructure that can support us. We need adequate positions at fire and rescue to keep us safe. We need functioning schools with enough teachers and staff to teach our kids. We need the positions for the Sheriff's Department to keep us safe. And that's what I'm hearing from a lot of people, saying it in their, their own different ways, is, you know, please help us. Help us keep our community a place that we want to be, that we feel safe living in. And I know you have a lot of decisions, and either way you decide, it's going to make people upset, and it's going to make some people happy. But from, from what I'm hearing from my seat over here, is a lot of support and, and people reaching out and asking for help. So, thanks for consideration, and thanks for all your hard work. You know, I don't think enough people recognize that and see it. The job that you do, it, it's not easy, the, the decisions that you make for all of us. But, but we're asking you for help, and, and thank you for considering.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone at all? Yes, ladies?
Hello again. My name is Sophia Gunteng.
And my name is Jessica Shospek.
We are from the Back Creek District. We, we came to speak at the last two meetings about Ailer, and we have come to speak again.
We are here on behalf of the Robert E. Ailer Middle School Student Staff and the Student Council. We have a folder that includes pictures of Ailer. With that, you will find the CO2 letters that we received just this year. We went to our school's website looking for asbestos letters to give to you, but instead we found a page titled "School Safety and Security." It said that Frederick County Public Schools is committed to providing and maintaining a safe environment for students and staff. We believe this statement is not fulfilled at Ailer.
We have come to speak again about the condition of Ailer and why it should be rebuilt and not renovated. This is a big deal to me. I want my five-year-old little sister to go to a healthy school. I was talking to her a few days ago about why Mom and I are leaving and going to meetings so often. I said that we are going so you don't have to go to a stinky and yucky school like me. I said to her that she does not deserve a smelly and gross school. She asked me, can you tell them that I want a new school? I would love it, and it would make me so happy. If you would like to make her happy, vote Ailer to be rebuilt. It should not be renovated because all the walls are load-bearing. The old gym, small office, tight hallways, and six-inch tall office will stay the same. A renovation is like putting a small bandage on a huge gash on your head. You know it needs stitches, but you want to save money and put a small bandage on it. Eventually, the bandage would get too dirty, and you'll need a new one. Soon after that, you will need another and another and another. If you don't rebuild Ailer, the same would happen. After a while, it will not meet the needs that it needs to meet. With the new housing developments being approved and the growth in the county, Ailer and many other schools will need more room. It is important that the schools are big enough for the kids being sent to Ailer and these new, and from these new neighborhoods. If you decide to renovate, there will not be enough room for the kids. You should vote Ailer to be rebuilt instead of being renovated.
We understand that you all do have other jobs, but you should consider coming to Ailer to look around. Even if you already have, look in the bathrooms, look in the locker rooms, look in the classrooms with students in them. Ailer is in desperate need of replacement. If you're going to vote on something so important, you should know exactly what you're voting on, and you should go around the school and see what we see every day. Yes, you might have gone for a few hours, but you can see everything wrong with Ailer in just a few hours. The sound you've been listening to is the box fans and the CO2 monitors beeping all day. We have to listen to this every day. This is just a part of what we have to hear every day, and we need you to know that we take this decision very seriously, and we want you to make the right decision of rebuilding Ailer, not renovating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. You had our IT director wondering what the beep was.
Mr. Chairman, was I supposed to take this out of that folder? I'm sorry.
I assume there was one for everyone.
I took one.
Was that your intention, ladies? A folder?
Yeah, just passing it down.
Yes, we did, we did do that. Thank you.
Pass it down, right?
They're different.
Pass it on.
A lot of pictures.
Anyone else like to speak? Anyone? Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am? Are the, are there, are these duplicates for each of us, or is the whole folder one thing that we were meant to pass down?
One copy.
Oh, in that case, this goes back with the copy. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, we'd be glad to copy those and distribute, or scan.
We'll forward them to everyone. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Emma Hunter, and I'm in the Back Creek District. I'm representing Ailer Middle School as an eighth grader. I would like to start off by saying that Ailer has incredible teachers and staff. But Ailer is in terrible condition. I have gone to Ailer since I was in sixth grade, and it's only gotten worse. About 10 years ago, the teachers were asking for renovations on certain things throughout the school, but never got them because they were being told the whole school was getting a renovation. But 10 years later, that obviously hasn't happened. I have some family that either goes to Ailer or will go to Ailer. Some of my cousins, Matthew, Lily, and Macy transferred to Frederick County about two years ago. They transferred right before the 2016-17 school year started. Matthew's an eighth grader now, but as a seventh grader then, same as me, he wasn't too excited to go to Ailer. Lily is a fifth grader this year, along with, with another cousin of mine, Jacob. Lily and Jacob will both have to go to Ailer next year. They've been inside Ailer many times and are not too thrilled about it. Macy's a kindergartner this year, so she will hopefully get to go to the new Ailer. I really hope she doesn't have to go to the same Ailer that we do. And last but not least, Elise Ryan. He is a seventh grader this year at Ailer. This is his first year at Frederick County Public Schools, and he still has to be at Ailer another year. Kids need to go to school and feel safe, but Ailer is not safe for anyone. You guys don't know what it's like to sit in one of those classrooms and constantly hear the CO2 monitors and the fans. It's such a disruption to class because once it starts going off, the teachers have to stop their class and go over to see how bad it is. And it's not just the CO2 levels. The bathrooms, gyms, lockers, locker rooms, and hallways are worse. You just don't understand. It's, you have no idea how hard it is. Please help us. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
Hi, Carrie Anne Kite, again from the Shawnee District. I just want to talk a little bit about community. I moved here in 2007. I moved here with a four-month-old child, and my husband started working at Shenandoah University. I entrenched myself in the community by finding a Moms group. I was new to the area. I was a new mom, and it was just the best way for me to learn, you know, what was going on and, and just find out. And as a small community, we reached out to our larger community. We took field trips to the firehouse. We took field trips to the sheriff's station. And, you know, I'm not part of the playgroup anymore, but they're still doing these things today. They're very involved in this community. And now that our kids are grown up, I still have a four-year-old, but I also have an 11-year-old next week. And, but they've now grown out and, and gone into the community. Some of them are now teaching. Some of them are nurses. Some of them are involved in nonprofits. And, again, this is just all part of the community. I know that, in some past meetings, people have accused the school board of trying to motivate parents or students to come out. I'm here to say that I personally started a group of some of these people that I've met to talk about the issues that are happening in this community. And I have actually called action for people to get involved in their community and to come out and speak about things that matter to them. And as I said, this is a very vibrant community, and I'm being here over 11 years. I've met a lot of people, and that group just grows and grows and grows. And this group is comprised of people from all walks of life and all different political parties, but they all believe in trying to make Frederick County a strong community together. And I just wanted to say that it is a great place, and we just have a, so maybe growing pains is what we're going through right now, and we just want to figure out a way to solve it. And I think the meals tax is a great idea, but unfortunately, that doesn't happen today. It's, it's down the line, and we just, we need help now, and we do need to find other solutions. And that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Avery Lundey, and I'm from the Opeckin District. And first, I want to say the Ailer teachers are amazing. They help you with everything, even if it's not school. If you need help and you just need to talk to someone, they're always there. And I feel like they deserve a better school. We have an extraordinary student body who tends to score above the state standards, and yet we're being educated in a substandard environment. Constant concern and worry over asbestos and carbon dioxide levels, as well as pests, such as rodents, crickets, and ants, which create an additional level of stress for these students. Fixtures in the restroom are fragile or hanging off the walls. And we, the best they've done were, they repainted the walls. That was it. The tiles have been falling off the walls, everything's, the locker rooms are super small, the lockers barely fit your book bags. So, I just think we should do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm Will Pitt. I'm from the Back Creek District, and I've only lived here four years, and...
Thank you, sir. You have to get a little more physical. There you go. That's the way.
I've only lived here four years, but public education is very important to me. The whole reason I live in Frederick County is because of the commitment to public education. It was the commitment to the schools. When I moved here, I moved here from Hawaii. There isn't a commitment to public schools, and I chose Frederick County only for that. And I listened to the Board of Supervisors meeting last time, and I was getting very upset because I thought, oh my gosh, I have four years before my youngest child goes to Ailer, and I'm going to have to move. I work in Warren County. I'm, travel half an hour every day because I want to be in Frederick County for the public schools, because I was told that the Board of Supervisors, Frederick County, believes in supporting schools. And so, I know people are getting very emotional about this, but, you know, the one thing I didn't check the whole time, I checked how far it was to work. I checked what the quality of the schools were. I checked, you know, the road conditions, everything. I didn't check the tax rate, and I don't know if anybody ever does. But, you know, we don't choose where we live based on the tax rate, most of us. We don't choose Buchanan County because it only has a 46 cents tax rate. We chose, we choose to live where the schools are good, where the county services are good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Adeline Wallen. I'm a sixth grader at Ailer Middle School. When I come to school every morning, the first thing I do is go to my locker. The lockers at Ailer are about six to seven inches wide. I'm one of the fortunate few students who have an empty locker beside me, but even with the extra locker space, I still find it that there is not enough space for me to get into my locker sometimes. The hallways in Ailer are narrow. When the whole sixth grade is switching classes, you often find yourself waiting because it's so crowded. I worry for the kids with disabilities. The science lab in the sixth-grade hall is very small and is the only one. Not only is the science lab small, but it also lacks a ventilation system. I hope you decide to rebuild Ailer. Thank you.
Nicely done. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Kate Gunteng. I'm a rising sixth grader. I'm going to Ailer next year. I am from the Back Creek District. In Ailer, the CO2 levels are really high in some classrooms. In some classrooms, they beep every 10 seconds. Trust me, I count it. They put box fans in the classrooms thinking that they help, but they don't. Also, the hallways, classrooms, and more are way too small for the teachers and kids in Ailer. Ailer is almost 50 years old and never been renovated. Last year, in my bus, there was a girl who was crying, not because she loved school, but because school was her safe place. School should be a safe and happy place. School should be a safe and happy place. In Ailer, you should not worry about the CO2 levels. You should be worried about your grades. The smoke detectors don't connect to the fire department, and some doors don't have locks. My parents are scared to send me to Ailer with the asbestos in the walls. If they renovate, then we, we will be exposed to it all day. Some people laugh at Ailer because they don't truly know how bad it is. Kids in Ailer should be proud to say they go to Ailer. They should not feel ashamed of it. Please rebuild Ailer, not in a few years, but now. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Anyone else? Anyone on any subject? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Walter Oots from the, that thing is rickety, Opeckin District. So I've heard the school board's project, project proposals to replace Robert E. Ailer Middle School referred to as a sales job. Well, of course, it's a sales job. They're trying to sell it to you. You have control of the money, our money. You represent us, the citizenry of the county. The school board makes proposals to the seven of you versus the thousands of us. But I think their efforts at transparency are commendable. Now, the question you have to ask yourselves when dealing with sales is, is this person or these people used car salesmen, or are they honest brokers? The folks, these, these folks on the school board are also public servants. Some, if not most of them, are educators who have dedicated their professional lives to educating children. So are we dealing with honest brokers? I think we are. The formal question is whether or not to appropriate $52 million to replace Robert E. Ailer Middle School. There have been other amounts mentioned to fund different solutions to remedy the Ailer issue. Recently, amounts from $33 million to $49 million have been mentioned for different levels of renovation with addition, I'm sure renovation only would be less. But that isn't proactive, and it isn't forward-looking. In the estimation of public servants specializing in education, $52 million is sought to continue to provide first-class education to the children of our county by replacing Robert E. Ailer Middle School. I say to you, please appropriate the funds. As for ultimately paying for capital projects such as the replacement, tax rates are properly your responsibility. Raising tax rates may be necessary to continue to help our county flourish in general. Specifically, Title 22.1 of the Virginia Code, which addresses education, allows for a special tax for capital expenditures or payment of indebtedness or rent. There is also a Virginia Public School Construction Grants Program and Fund, also entitled 22.1. Let's make those things, including raising taxes, happen if we need to. More outside the box. I did a quick Google search earlier today, and crowdfunding as a means of paying for capital improvement projects for local government has proven to be a viable means of raising revenue for specific projects in other places in the nation. Let's explore that option. I'll close by asking again to please approve the special appropriations request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come in on any subject? Yes, sir?
My name is Dylan Hunter. I'm from the Back Creek District. I didn't come here to state a speech, but was sitting here, listening to all these people, talking about Ailer. I went for, I went there for three years. I felt all the experiences. I'm now at Shenandoah in 10th grade, and that school's good. That school needs some help, but Ailer is in real bad condition. I went there, lockers were falling off their hinges. The bathroom for the urine, there's no bathroom stalls. There was no doors in the bathroom stalls. It was just a really bad time when I went there. I had some good times, but I had some good teachers, especially Ms. Tuckash, sitting back there somewhere. And, well, it was just a really good experience, but not, I come home every day from football, and I hear my sister and my cousins talk about it. It's, they hate it. They don't like it. The beeping goes off every day, and it's John and I sing. So please help them, help my future family members get through it, and please renovate Ailer. Renovate, not renovate, but rebuild Ailer.